With a roll call vote, or a roll call of attendance?
Newman.
Here.
Scali.
Here.
Azar.
Here.
Chair Foster.
Here.
Showalter.
Here.
Brazen.
Here.
Subakatani.
Here.
And Councilman Palika let us know that he's on his way.
I motion to excuse Councilman Palika.
Second. Motion by Showalter, second by Brazen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next. We have approval of the agenda this evening. We have two items of business, 5A and 5B, two site plans for review. Are there any notes or changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Through the chair. Do you want to say? We'll just add that to the commission items. Thank you. Second. One just friendly discussion item on the agenda. To state a multifamily development. And I believe that's how our ordinance currently states that type of development. But we did talk about how we will no longer be using multifamily as the phrasing, but multi-unit residential for the future, so I just wanted to make that comment. All those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Showalter and Brazen again, right? All right, on to minutes. Consideration of approval of November 20th, 2024, meeting minutes.
Move to accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Michele, and seconded by Showalter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just want to comment, you did a great job on the minutes system. Always, but particularly nice. Great job. All right, now we come to our call to audience. If anyone is in the audience that would like to speak to any matter not on our agenda. I do believe that everyone in the audience is here just for agenda items. So we can move forward to new business, item 5A. The consideration of site plan approval for 651 Livernoy, a multi-unit residential development, which will be teed up by our planner, Christine Ross. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. I will be introducing the first site plan on the agenda tonight for a multiple-unit apartment complex at 651 Livernoy.
Christine, sorry. For the record, Councilman Palika has joined us at 635. Sorry for the interruption.
Okay, so the applicants are seeking site plan approval for a three-story, 26-unit apartment complex at 651 Livernoy. The site is zoned MXD2, so multifamily is permitted in this zoning district by right. Notable requests for this particular project is that the applicant is requesting a parking waiver of five off-street parking spaces. And they are citing the presence of bike lanes on Livernoy. And there's a Mogo bicycle share station as well. And then they are also requesting a waiver for the primary and secondary building material percentages. So not the actual materials, the percentages. So all the materials aren't complying with the ordinance. So there's no waiver for that. This project has come to us for a discussion item last year, sometime, I think, early 2023. And then they also came to BZA for a driveway with request. But due to redesigning of things, they decided to go with a different design that complied with the ordinance and the fire code. So that is about all I have. I'll move it over to the applicants now.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Through the chair, I know the TVs are not on. IT let us know. That's an issue. So the projector is the only thing we have up tonight. Apologies.
Thank you.
How do I, do I control? Yeah, if you want to scroll through this, perfect. All right, great. Well, good evening. My name is Jason Krieger with Clear Cloud Architects, 400 East Lincoln, Royal Oak, Michigan. I've got the developers here from Afflex Construction, Alan and Hassan Juad, sitting right there. And so I'll walk through the presentation. And then if there are any questions that I can't answer that they need to answer, I'll ask them to come up and answer it. But I should be able to hopefully answer pretty much everything. So this is a 26-unit apartment building, all residential, from the ground all the way up. We have 26 parking spaces onsite. And I'll just kind of flip through while we chat. So these are some aerial renderings. And you can see the building is positioned up along Livernoy. The idea is to create more of a pedestrian facade along the sidewalk. We're hiding the parking along the back of the building. And as mentioned, we have a driveway in the north and on the south. On the north, I think it was 12 feet, and I think 20 on the south. So it's one-way. So if I go to site plan, I'll flip back to the renderings. By the way, let's see. There you go. So it's one-way in on the north, and then you would circulate around to the south. And then you could exit back out onto Livernoy. So the main entrance to the building is on the west. You'd come in right off the parking lot. And then we have some egress stairs, egress on the north end and on the south end. We don't have a ton of amenities, but we do have the mail package areas, things like that. It is a central corridor building, so you access the units from the inside. So it's very secure for the tenants. They come in off the parking lot with a key fob, then they go in, and then they can go in left or right, whichever unit they live in. We have bike parking onsite also inside. There is a dumpster, our trash receptacle, on the outside. That's where the trash and recycling would be there. So folks would take the trash out there on trash days. I believe that we meet all the requirements for landscaping. As mentioned, we are seeking a deviation of five spaces for the parking. We are parked one-to-one, so these are all one-beds. And in our experience, that's par for the course for one-beds. What we're seeing is a trend for communities is parking requirements are going down, which is good, because that way you have less asphalt, more green space. And, you know, they would manage the parking as required with their tenants, right? So they're going to tell people as they come in, you get one spot or however it works. So they would have to manage that. This is just an example of the onsite bike repair station that we're proposing. Our landscape, I believe, meets code. We have a substantial green belt along the west between our project and the residential. Part of that is, A, it's great. The other thing is there's an easement on there. We can't build anything there anyway, so we took advantage of that. We're going to plant it up. We are screening the transformer. There's some civil drawings in here that I could probably skip through. Our photometric plan complies with the ordinance, which is demonstrated here, results from the write-up that I'm sure you all read through. We do comply with the fire report, as well as civil engineering. Here are some floor plans. So you can walk in here. We have interior bike room, package. Stairwell is pretty straightforward. And then we have the one-bedroom units that face the west and the east. So these are the elevations. I'll go back to the renderings in a second. What we have for the materials is brick along the ground floor, so it's very durable. This development group, they hold on to their properties for a very long time. It's a generational piece. So we want to make sure that whatever we propose is something they don't have to touch, like everyone, for a very, very long time. So we have a masonry base of brick, and we have examples there of the materials. On the upper area, we have a metal panel that's more of like a reveal, but it's pre-finished, kind of finished, 25-year warranty. They'll never have to mess with it. So I know that, I think we could have done James Hardy siding, and that has a good warranty and it's pre-finished. But we like this, just it's more durable, and we think it'll look great. And all of our trim, brick metal around the windows. There's going to be a dark bronze to match the windows. Again, there's an example there on the board in front of you guys. So that's our elevations. Let me go back up to the renderings really quick here. So this looks a little bit brighter than what the actual material is. I think it's just, you know, the way the rendering came out. But that's really intense. So we have a full wood product in these boxouts. We have the metal siding. We have bolt-on canopies. And we think that it'll look really nice along the street. There's a nice rhythm to it. It's contemporary. And we think it's going to be a great asset for Ferndale.
Thank you. I'll start off with a few questions, and since you just mentioned balconies, you said canopies, but I'm going to go to balcony.
Oh, up here, there's these guys. But yeah, you're correct.
I got it after I said it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, these are bolt-on balconies here. Correct, yeah.
It looks like those are actually usable balconies, but I just wanted to state for the record.
Correct, yeah.
All right. And I just have a couple of quick things that I'll say here. But first of all, also, I want to give Vice Chairman Showalter the opportunity to say.
I'm going to recuse myself from this one.
Okay. You did mention the lighting complies with our ordinance. However, it does look like they are not shielded and actually shoot light upward, which I don't believe complies with our ordinance. So I would want to see that those were downward directed and shielded lighting fixtures. And you did talk about the masonry wall in the area, I'll guess go to landscaping. The area behind, one, it's kind of hard to see exactly where the wall is going to be. Could you just point it out while you're going through here? Then my biggest concern as you're pulling that up is that it's going to be difficult to maintain behind a six-foot wall?
Yeah, correct. So it's going to be a lot right at the parking. So our plantings are behind it, so that's a good point. So maybe we should leave a little, I don't know, three-foot, you know, leave-out or a gate or something to get back there. Because, yeah, you're right. Because of this easement, we can't put the wall back here on the property line. So it's actually at the parking is where the wall is.
Have you talked to those owners at all?
No. I don't know, maybe, have you spoken to the owners at all? Okay. They're probably.
I'm sure. But did you talk to them about, like, that fence at all, or happened to bring that up? Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you for coming to the podium. Welcome, Alan.
I am the owner of Afflex, and I've been on Livernoy since 2002, so. But in answer to your question, yes, I did speak to one of the owners there. And that was the owner to the south there, where there were a bunch of trees in the easement next to the building to the south. And they were, again, very pleased. And I discussed the Burma Wall and that sort of thing, and they were very happy. That easement tends to flood quite a bit back there. And, yeah, there were no, they were, I had some of the renderings on my phone, and I showed her as we were taking trees down. And she asked us, take some more trees down in her backyard. And I said, yeah, I don't, yeah, can't do that right now, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, just with the difficulty, and since it'll be a six-foot, it might be potentially difficult to actually see even what you. If at any time, I would suggest, and I'm not sure if the commission would agree with me, but sometimes neighbors don't even prefer the six-foot masonry. It's nice, and of course you'll have the parking, so it'll be nice to shield that. But if you talk to them along this process as we're going through, and they happen to want to, they don't mind that it's a shorter wall, or that'd be something that I think that you could work with the city with, especially if you talk to the residents and see what they would prefer.
Yeah, we'd be happy.
Okay, just want to say, does anyone else have any feedback on that point? Or landscaping in general, we can move to.
Yeah, maybe it's a combination where, you know, there is certain height, because that'll help block headlights from shining in the back.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
But maybe it's masonry up to a certain point, and then wrought iron or something similar above that. That way, you still got visual to the landscaping. You still block headlights.
And I can't, so I can't really tell. It's kind of hard to see where it is. So, because it doesn't look like it's the full north property line. So how, can you show us the dimensions?
I think it's only along the west.
It's just on the west? Okay, it was kind of difficult to tell.
True. Oh, let's see, it returns back, one second. Yeah, yeah, I think it does. Show it on here. So right now, we're just showing it along the west. So if we have to return it, we can add that if you guys want.
Well, so down towards the bottom, where there's the bike parking, would you have access there then? Or is it full?
Right now, it's shown all the way. But again, if we come up with a different design, I like the idea of maybe making it like four feet for the headlights, and then just a lot of green space. That'd be really cool. And we could do a leave-out or something like that in the corner. Go back and, you know, your maintenance people, go back there and take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're correct as well. I think there is going to have to be a return on that north wall as the property abuts a residential property to the north. And their backyard is there, yes.
Yeah, it should be going the width of the parking lot.
Or if it's okay, we'd like to work with staff to make sure we get that dialed in.
Thank you. I think that it's, yeah, it would be great to work with staff, I think, because it's actually MXD2. You have a little bit of flexibility there. Anything else on landscaping as we're talking about it? Or on the parking?
Yes, adjacent to, I don't recall on the site plan, but I guess the reminder, the note about flooding, reminded in terms of stormwater retention or detention on the site?
Right, yeah, so we will maintain everything on the site. We have to maintain it. We have to keep it, control it, detain it, and then release it per law back into the city storm sewer system.
Thank you. I was just going to say, also, because of the parking lot screening ordinance, I think technically you should have some hedge or a low fence on that little butt out on the south.
Here?
To the left, the green space area across from there. Yep, that, Joe.
Oh, here?
Yeah. I'm not sure it's actually going to screen anything from, that's from public view.
I mean, we could add a hedge roll along here or something that might, that's kind of, you're saying basically in this area.
Yeah, and do you know where utilities stuff will go?
Meters.
Meters and all that?
Meters, actually, meters will probably be on the sidewalks, yeah.
Yeah, so if you could put them on the south wall and then screen that, I think that would be preferred. All right, so you talked about the accessibility or the access and how it's interior. Obviously, you can see from the ads that there are accessways from the front, but there's no main entrance from Livernoy. Is that, that's correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Right now, it's depicted as a door wall. And if, yeah, I thought about that before I came here. We could always add a walk out to the sidewalk, you know, if the planning commission wants to. Right now, it's really a sitting area for the folks who live there.
There's quite a bit of traffic and amenities along Livernoy. I think residents might actually desire that. I would love to actually see a main entrance, a main entrance on Livernoy. But as you have it, I think that the northern access, because that's a main access there as well, right? Most people will probably, especially if they're getting in their cars, will use the west entrance. But there is so much going on around Livernoy. And it's a very walkable neighborhood, and so we'd just like to see that the access is along the.
Sure, yeah. So folks could come out this way, but, you know, we did that at the Flatiron Ridge. We actually have it connected to the sidewalk, and I think it's a little successful. But we could, you know, we could always do that too here.
Anyone have an opinion on those connecting to the sidewalk?
Say, on the topic of doors, though, those four interior units, the three on the center on the east side and the one on the west side, don't have interior doors indicated. Is that just an issue with the rendering?
Uh, yeah, they were missed.
Okay, so it's not that the only door there? Okay.
Yes, there should be doors there.
Just wanted to confirm.
I'm going to tell them that you brought that up, because they didn't believe me. I said, it will come up, I promise. Yeah, I mean, he's.
I just wanted to make a note on the parking waiver that I do believe that had our new ordinance been adopted, which it will be shortly and be enacted in the next 90 or so days, I do believe that they would not require a parking waiver for this. I also just wanted to mention for the record that I believe in the packet, there is a typing error on the on the off-street parking grid. The calculations are correct, but it states that there's 12 units on the floor level where it's eight, requiring 13 spaces. If I'm reading that correct, I just wanted to note that, but. Anyone? Have anything else? Those are the items that I had.
Yeah, just a question through the chair. I just wasn't able to see it, so maybe I'm missing it. What is the condition at the north property line?
I'm sorry, the condition?
Yeah, how does the drive meet the adjacent property?
So it, really, it drives right along the side of the property line. There's a curb there right now. That's basically what it is, a curb line.
And then the existing buildings up against the other, when you go farther down, so. I guess what I'm hearing is there's only going to be a curb between the drive and the adjacent property.
That's correct. It would be pretty much like what you're seeing here. So there'd be a curb line.
All the way back.
Uh, that's correct. And then, as mentioned, we're going to work with staff. We're probably going to bring a wall back to block the parking lot.
Thanks, I just said how it's typically built with a curb there when it's. Yeah, everyone's shaking their heads, okay. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, there are two example motions in the packet, one for a parking waiver and one for a site plan approval. We've had a couple things noted that we might want to add to. I actually lost those motions. To our conditions, including lighting to be downward directed and shielded. To work with the city on the parking shielding and the wall at the back to allow for maintenance and to potentially shield from the north property. And to have a landscape screening for the south wall where meters will be placed. And potentially for the path to extend to the sidewalk.
Through the chair, very weird question. Is there bus service on Livernoy?
No.
I can't recall.
There's not.
There is not. Okay.
It's kind of a surprise.
There's on Hilton.
I mean, I know there's not, because I live there, but I've never seen it. I never thought about it.
That actually brings up another question through the chair. So the existing, like, parking striping that's on the other side of the, I guess it's for maybe Kyle or Roger. The existing parking striping that's on the other side of the bike lane, will that get adjusted through this site plan update?
It'll have to.
Oh, because of the reduction of the curb cut?
Shows on CO2, just the existing. So I don't know how it'll be solved, I was just wondering if that's part of this.
Yeah, so I think one of the conditions is to work with DPW on the streetscaping project. So the parking will be addressed during that process.
Mostly just painting, so.
Do you want us to add that as a condition?
Change. It's the way, because the way it's laid out right now, it would have to change.
Through the chair, I really thought that was on there. So we do recommend that it gets added as a condition, just to make sure that the street layout is still going to be fine after the elimination of the curb cut.
So the existing conditions are final engineering details, proposed signage, combining parcels, and a long-term stormwater maintenance agreement to be submitted. Was that the only other one that you expected to be on there?
Through the chair, I guess I'll start with the parking reduction motion. I move that in the matter of 651 Livernoy, Sidwell numbers 24, 25, 33, 435, 031, and 24, 25, 33, 435, 032. The planning commission approved the parking reduction request of five off-street parking spaces based on the plans dated November 14, 2024, with the following findings as listed in section 24223G. Findings as availability of nearby on-street parking, availability of alternative modes of transportation such as protected bicycle lanes on Livernoy, and the availability of Mogo bicycle share station at 567 Livernoy, which is approximately 260 feet south of the parcel boundary.
Support. It's a motion by Michele, support by Brazen. Roll call vote, please.
All right, let's do Newman.
Yes.
Michele.
Yes.
Azar.
Yes.
Palika.
Yes.
Subakatani.
Yes.
Brazen.
Yes.
And Chair Foster.
Yes.
And just for the record, again, Chair. Usually just like Commissioner Showalter, who is messing me up, sorry. This is recusing himself from vote. All right. Motion passes? Go ahead.
Chair, is, it mentions that a waiver is needed for building material percentages. Does that need a motion?
Good question. We have that. It's in the findings of the. Full motion? Yes, yeah. Yeah, I apologize. That DPW finding was supposed to be in there, but I missed it somehow. So we don't need a motion for the waiver. We just need to state it in the motion for the site plan. Correct, yes. Thank you. Can assist anyone with the conditions that I had mentioned?
In the matter of 651 Livernoy, Sidwell numbers included in the draft application that the planning commission approved the site plan, based on plans dated November 14, 2014, the following findings is subject to the following conditions. Findings one through four is stated, are these findings or conditions?
Conditions.
Okay, and conditions, one through four is stated, plus a condition for the lighting to be downward and shielded is required that the west screen, or number, let's call it number five. Number six would be the west screen wall that staff works with the applicant and to have access to maintain the western side of the parcel and also in the interest or communicating with adjacent properties. And also, along with that, looking at the screen wall return on the north side if necessary. Number six?
Seven?
Seven? Final engineering for the streetscape or parking striping.
Would offer that a number eight would be landscape shielding of meters?
Oh, thank you. Number eight, landscape shielding of meters. And I believe number nine, we wanted a walk to extend to the sidewalk.
On my last. Okay. Report. Motion by Azar, support by Brazen. Friendly amendment, do we need to mention DPW in the streetscape improvements? All right, accepted. Second. Okay. All right. Roll call vote, please. House member Polka.
Yes.
Bakatani.
Yes.
Brazen.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Michelle Lee.
Yes.
Azar.
Yes.
Chair Foster.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next, we have the consideration of a site plan approval for 2000 West Eight Mile Road, industrial development. We will start with a presentation from staff planner Kyle Breis.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is site plan approval for a warehouse expansion at 2000 West Eight Mile. So this is also known as Detroit Axel. This is a existing industrial facility in the southwest corner of our city. You can see on the screen, we have the existing conditions of the area. So as this is in the corner, it does butt up against Royal Township to the west. We have Eight Mile here at the bottom, and across from there is Detroit. You can see a little bit of our commercial in Ferndale here on the right, along with some residential that butts up directly to Pinecrest. So the site is currently, it's a mix of wooded area with a facility on the west side. And then in the middle and on the east side, there's some existing outdoor storage. So you can see at the north, it's pretty heavily wooded. Some people call it Ferndale Forest. But in the middle area, it's quite a bit more sparse. There were an old chemical factory here back several decades ago. It's been long since demolished. So this internal area has been used for outdoor storage. It's currently screened, kind of hidden from view from Eight Mile, but it's not very visible. So the applicant is proposing a phased expansion of warehousing. So you can see in this image here, we have the existing building. It's outlined with some crosshatching. There is a proposed 18,500 square foot connector building, which will connect to the two phased warehouse facilities that are 150,000 square feet each. So phase one would be immediately built to connect to it, and phase two would come later. So the site has a number of existing curb cuts that kind of have been used more. You know, some are used more than others over the years. The applicant proposes to eliminate two of them and retain usage of two additional. So the main, I guess, I'll let the applicant speak to the business side of things and why the site has been engineered as it is. But the main truck access will be off of Eight Mile. It will then loop around the building where there's a number of truck wells that will be attached to the connector building, but also to the back of the phase one warehouse facility. The applicant has also proposed a circular drive to go around to the back. So this will connect to the parking areas in the rear of the existing site. Parking is added throughout this area. They have some landbagged parking spaces for the phase two. We also have a temporary access drive for fire safety during the time that phase one is up, but phase two is not. An earlier design proposed to remove everything off of Pinecrest, but upon fire review, our fire marshal requested access to remain off Pinecrest. So one of the, I guess, conditions is to discuss options to keep trucks to use Eight Mile only and not to use Pinecrest. There's a pretty substantial detention pond proposed in the front. Scroll down a little bit. The applicant has provided parking, which is based on the number of employees for the total site at the maximum shift, which is 270. There is EV parking. There is ADA accessible EV parking. There are bicycle parking provided, both for the exterior fix and also for the enclosed, which is proposed to be inside the facility. It provided a number of truck turning radii images. They've proposed a pretty robust landscaping plan. So it retains a number of large trees primarily along Eight Mile at the corner and up near the northern end of the site. There's a significant number of trees and shrubs that are allotted for the detention pond, for the parking areas, and for the green belt. So the numbers for all these have all been included in the packet. You know, it's a pretty big site, so it definitely has a lot of landscaping. So there's a fair amount of screening that is going along the east side from the Pinecrest residential. The landscaping plan, or the photometric plan, excuse me, is in conformance. We do show light stopping at the property lines. They provided their details for the light fixtures, which are directed downwards. You have some interior shots of the facility. It is a pretty open warehouse building, so again, I can let the applicant speak to that. You can see the truck wells as they connect on the back. In terms of the outside finishes, it's primarily precast concrete. There's a color scheme with some color accents to break it up. So I think the applicant has added some of these breakups to give it some vertical and horizontal articulation as you look at it. The one thing of note is on the east side of phase one, so before phase two is built, they are proposing to utilize some CMU, which is not permitted per ordinance. They are proposing to waive that and utilize split face CMU. We do have a material board, which they will share with you during their presentation. Here we have a rendering of the site. So showing the breakups. I think the last thing that I would like to touch on is if you recall, a similar industrial expansion at 965 Wanda, they had to go to the BZA to be in line with their existing buildings. This applicant also went through that process. So they attended the BZA meeting of September 17. They received four variances. So they received two variances for the build two. So if they were to construct by our ordinance requirements, the entire facility would have to be, I think, up to 15 feet from Pinecrest and probably 40 or so feet door to door from the residential there. They would also have to be up to 15 feet from Eight Mile itself. The BZA also permitted surface parking between Pinecrest and the facility. And they allowed to reduce the number of pedestrian access points on the front facade of the building. Because, you know, I think most of the non-resident or non-employee facing business will be handled through the existing facility. And Commissioner Azar was at that BZA meeting. So that's all I have in terms of notes. I think the only waiver that we have is for the CMU. I'd be happy to talk about anything else, but I'll turn it over to the applicant in the meantime.
And for the P and Lu, but we don't. Is that just on you guys? We just have to agree to that, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome.
How's everyone tonight?
Good. How you doing?
I'm Scott Kreister. I'm with JB Donaldson Company, and we are the contractor for Detroit Axel. We've been involved in this project for quite some time. We were back here, oh, had to be four years ago. Received site plan approval. And we're back now again with a new layout. Obviously, it's a bit larger than it was before in two phases. The first phase is, Kyle said, it's 150,000 square feet with an 18,000-foot connector, which has a caveat that the buildings are at different elevations. So there's a downward or upward, however you want to look at it, ramp between the two facilities to maintain the grades of the existing property to the east and maintain his property on the west that's already an operation, an operating facility. His plan is to move forward with the second phase of the construction of another 150,000 square feet within a three-year period. So somewhere around 28, 29 is the completion of the total project. In between there, though, the loop road that you see that goes around, I guess that runs parallel to Pinecrest coming off of Eight Mile Road. That road will be installed, complete. The landscaping will be installed, complete along Pinecrest. Everything will be done except for the 150,000 square feet addition. Kyle also mentioned that we plan on, we would like to use CMU on the east side of the first phase of the project. And that'll have an IMP panel, which is an insulated metal panel above it. What that will do is it will, it will, first of all, it's a cost savings to the owner, and it makes the removal of the wall between the two phases much less costly rather than putting a precast panel up and having to basically, I'm going to say, throw away the precast panel. So we have, I believe we have the board up there that has the masonry, which would be a split face masonry. It's a, it's, it's a very long distance from Pinecrest to where anyone would see this, and it's also screened by landscaping. Kyle also mentioned that we're closing some curb cuts up, which we are. The fire marshal has asked that there's an access at the north end of the bill, north end of the road off of Pinecrest, which we don't plan on semi-truck use in there. That would be a gated curb cut for access by the fire marshal or fire department only if there happens to be some sort of emergency. All of our truck traffic would come in off of Eight Mile Road, loop up around the back. They would nose up towards the north and back into the, to the truck wells and then just mirror that going back out to Eight Mile Road. We're adding substantial truck, not truck traffic. We're adding substantial truck docks on the back of the building. And they'll have, they'll have trailers at them that they load, and then they come and get picked up. The building is a warehouse. It's being racked for, it's, it's the product that comes in, comes out, goes out. There's a lot of e-commerce product that comes in and out of here. And the stormwater, we put out front because we have to get that water down to the city storm system. And we had originally planned to have the pond up at the top of the property, the north end of the property, which it just, it will not work to put it up there. So we've put it out front. We've landscaped around it very nicely. It'll be a nice feature out front of the property. Because I believe we're roughly 80 feet from the road, 80 or 100 feet from the road, if I'm not mistaken. Roughly.
How far are you from Pinecrest?
We are well, the first phase is 425 feet from Pinecrest. Second phase is going to be roughly 60 feet from Pinecrest. Actually, it's more than that.
Looked about 100.
60-foot parking is probably 120 feet.
The variances that were received are for 140 from Eight Mile and then 130 from.
Pinecrest, right.
That's 130 at the completion of phase two, Kyle. To clarify, that was, the 130 feet from Pinecrest was at pond completion of phase two.
That's the pond completion of phase two.
Yeah, so before 65 and then 130.
You know, Mike plans on bringing in, Detroit Axel plans on bringing in, you know, 120 employees on two shifts in the first phase. Bumping it up to 140 employees on two shifts in the second phase. So it's, it's a couple hundred, you know, 260 employees that he plans on bringing into the community. He already employs 160 people in the community. So he's, you know, he's doing a lot for the, for the community. He tries a lot. He tries very hard. He's actually, he's, he's working very hard. This is not a very easy piece of property to develop. I will give you that.
We understand from the many proposals we've seen over the years.
Very, very challenging. From Hayes-Lemran, the way they left it. It's not, it's not a very simple site. So I commend him on what he's doing. Making a lot of, a lot of strides to make this happen.
I appreciate it. Well, thank you. All right, well, I have a couple questions to start with. One on the access. So thank you for the detail on the Pinecrest Drive. That would be a gated access for fire only. And because of that, I change back kind of how I feel about it, but I think per our, per our ordinance, that curb cut should actually be aligned with, was it Marie Street there to the right east of it? Mary, Marie?
It's Marie. Move it just north.
Yes, and so I know there is an existing curb cut. However.
You guys just, you guys just fixed it.
I see that too, which was probably terrible to do that, not in accordance with our align. However, with changing the site plan and with this amount of redevelopment, we do have the ability to move that based on your, your request for a site plan. With it being that you want to close it off, I'm not sure it's necessary. I do want to say, though, that it's more of a safety issue when you have them kind of not lining up like that. There's just more room for incidents. Pinecrest is not a very busy road. It is a minor arterial, though, with a lot of high school traffic at some points. So I just want to mention that I think with your design, it makes sense to leave it was just done, et cetera. But of course, we have to think of also the future. So I just want to say that if you do come back to us again, you change the phase or whatnot, it's a potential that we would want you to move that if there was going to be additional traffic coming from there. And so I just want to warn you that, you know, if that was something you just wanted to change now, instead of potentially after doing it in the future.
It's not our intention to have any traffic except for.
That's what I understand.
Ferndale traffic.
Which I think makes it not a very big point. I just want to let you know where my thoughts were with that and that power ordinance is stated. So and I think that the, the placement of the drive on Eight Mile is very close to complying with our ordinance, which has quite a bit of room going between drives. So I think that's very well placed and good that we're going to be removing the drive on Eight Mile. Which works out.
We would love to move it towards Pinecrest, but the road commission will not allow it.
Yeah, it would be too close, I think, for safety issues.
Intersections can't be that long.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for working with that. And I think that, I mean, it's going to be pretty, it doesn't even look like trucks will be able to, even if you didn't have it gated up on Livernoy, to use that access. So I think that's not going to be an issue.
It's not. It's in the map for some of them.
On pedestrian access, thank you for already including the sidewalk along Eight Mile. One of the things I remember talking about in 2019, and I know that this is a bit different design, but there is a, two bus stops right there on Eight Mile.
There's one there. It's still there. It'll remain.
There's still two there?
No, it's one.
Okay, I thought there was one to the east of that new drive and then one to the south of the detention pond.
Right there?
Yeah, right where the pond is. Is that one no longer operational?
The bus stop.
Okay, I believe there's still, there's one closer to Livernoy. Yep, right where Tom.
There could well be, I apologize, there could well be one.
Yeah, so we talked about having sidewalks that would come from the bus stop to, to make sure that pedestrians had access to where they would be going if someone was to use the bus. Any employees that would then have, you know, a safe access to the building. And so I think with the, I'm not sure where, you know, employees would enter and what that would look like, but I think that we would want to also just kind of discuss the pedestrian access, particularly with there being those bus stops right there. So if you can maybe walk us through what you would think.
So employees who get off on the bus, they'll, they'll walk to the existing facility, which they do now. And enter through that building and go in through the connector into the warehouse if they're not driving themselves.
I need that kind of job to get all my steps in. I need that kind of job to get all my steps in. And I think that with the design how it is, that probably makes sense. I know that there was a different entryway in the design that we had saw in 2019.
Mm-hmm. It had an office in front of it, that's redesigned.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on access or parking design?
Just on the same question with the sidewalks. There's not existing a sidewalk there, but I see when in the rendering, it's planned to add between the bus stop and...
Yeah, we're gonna add the sidewalk.
Okay, great, I just wanted to...
Yeah, it's a long ways.
Yeah, it is, I've tried to ride my bike along that side of Eight Mile, it's terrible.
All right, wanna move on?
I have some questions for along Pinecrest, just to try and understand that. With our residents along Pinecrest, I saw the landscaping that you guys proposed, looks to me by civil, there's about a six-foot berm that rises up off of the edge there, and then you've got some landscaping in front of that berm. And is there, is there fencing or anything like that?
There's fencing there now, and there'll be fencing there again.
How tall is it, will it be screened?
Six-foot chain link fence.
Will it be screened fencing, or just, it'll be like...
It was not meant to be screened, six-foot chain link fence as it is right now. It's pretty well overgrown right now, but our plantings will be on the inside of that, and again, they'll be high enough to where you really won't be able to see in the site.
So my, my line of questioning is, if I am a resident living in those houses, what am I seeing looking out? So I'm looking across the street, it'll, it'll berm up, you've got, you know, you're in 130 feet, and then you're asking for a variance with the imperial along that, which, that, that water table goes up about four feet or something like that? Or how, how much is that?
It's, we have, what is that, what is that block, eight feet? 10 feet right now.
So essentially, if I'm standing at the sidewalk along Pinecrest, I'm looking up about 16 feet to the top of where that, where that, the variances were, you're asking for?
Remind, let me just remind you, it's only on Phase One. When we go to Phase Two, it's gonna be precast all the way to the ground.
All the way to the ground.
All the way to the ground, be no masonry.
And that meets, does that meet our, okay.
So the, the, the block is there only because it's a means of being able to remove it easier?
Correct.
And that's, you know, 400 somehow feet in.
Yep, okay, understood. That's what I was trying to understand, I appreciate that.
So, go ahead. Just looking at the, the existing chain link fence that's out there, it's currently a barbed wire chain fence, or is, are there, is, is the plan to keep the existing chain link fence? So you're just...
Or replace it.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's in pretty dire shape.
I see there's like, some kind of screening material that seems to be attached on it currently.
There's all kinds of stuff attached to it currently.
And then, okay, and just, so we wouldn't be able to replace it with any barbed wire fence, because barbed wire fence isn't per our ordinance, I wasn't sure what the details were on it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't really have a problem with CNU being 400 feet in, no one's gonna read it, you're just, it's gonna be so far away, it's just gonna read as a...
Won't be able to tell us.
Yeah, I mean...
Are we gonna be exposed for about three years or so?
Yeah, it's, it's when Phase Two happens, it's, I mean, it's gonna be precast at that point.
My design issues are more along Eight Mile, actually. I think that looks like a very nice warehouse, which it is, and so I'm not offended by that at all. When we did see this last four years ago, whenever, in 2019, the design was much different, it had differences in massing and articulation along the wall, as well as the front entrance, which was nice, and it had some different materials. I feel like this does have some breaking up of the facade. But this is, I think what I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the floor down here. You guys can't tell what I'm looking at, but that's just Phase One, and there'll be a second one of these, I imagine, that looks just like it. And so, I mean, those are two just giant warehouse buildings. I think it kind of is what it is, and I think it's not an ugly warehouse by any means, but I just wanted to, it is quite different than what we saw last time, which had a bit more articulation and design to it. And that's what I'm looking at.
I, I would agree with what you're saying. Again, it is just a warehouse, there's no office space whatsoever in this. But you can see that the windows that we've installed along the front of this are not warehouse-type windows at all. I mean, this is, there's a lot of, a lot of glass space that we put in on the face of this building, to try and, to try and, you know, I guess soften, make it more acceptable along Eight Mile Road.
Mm-hmm. Which is, which is good. It's kind of hard to tell from some of these, you know, views, but even with the windows, I mean, they kind of start, I mean, I think from, you're gonna be quite set back from it from the street, so I think it will look kind of respectively correct. But this is also kind of the entrance to Ferndale from one side, so I just want to note that, you know, albeit on Eight Mile, we have talked quite a bit in our master planning process, zoning ordinance process, that we don't want Eight Mile to just be this road where we're not engaging our community. But I also do know that we need space for these types of places, because lots of people order online and have e-commerce needs and warehousing, so. Well, I know that we have to balance that, I just wanted to kind of state that I'm personally not happy, and I actually don't usually talk about architecture, but...
To put it in perspective, this building's almost 50 feet tall.
It's a big, giant.
Those windows are gigantic.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are very, very large windows.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see, you can see in proportion of the size of the doors, how big those windows are, and how high up they are.
Mm-hmm.
Another comment on the Eight Mile-facing side with stormwater retention pond. No, we saw the elevation with quite a few, like, stepped down. I assume there's been a review of the, the total depth, unexpected depth of water in the pond in terms of fencing or shielded.
At any given time, is that the question?
Yes, so generally, yeah, like the calculation for a major storm, for the total depth of water, assuming, especially because it's pedestrian and high school, for, for shielding around the pond.
Slicker with Hubble Roth and Clark, yeah, we've done all the calculations, and there's two ponds, we actually had two different levels because of the elevations of the approaches on the east side of the building. A lot of that water goes, most of it goes on the front there, and then it's gonna be aligned ponds, it'll be dry, and as the other one will be as well.
Okay, but the, the depth is suitable for, like...
For the volume we need, correct?
I guess I'm not talking about necessarily from the volume perspective of water, but for safety of people around.
Yeah, side soaps are all, I think, five, so they're...
Okay.
...the standard, so.
Okay, so they can walk out, it doesn't need a fence.
Okay.
Through the chair, speaking about the retention ponds, my, my concern is overstagnant water. I would like to see devices that are put in to allow for movement of the water.
Yeah.
They have, they have pumps that, you know, allow water, and actually, it would look attractive if you had, you know, a couple of, of pumps spraying up water, just to keep that water moving for the sake of mosquitoes breeding. If there's a period of time where there's not a lot of water movement, my fear would be mosquitoes would start breeding.
Yeah, the pond is intended to be dry, so after the rain event, 48 hours later, it'll be dry.
But there'll be no...
Yeah, we, we've been told that before, and we have a place on Marshall that is constantly filled.
If, if the stand pipe isn't maintained, and the, the filter gets clogged up, then, I mean, there could be the potential, but that would be the sign for the owner to go out, have it cleaned out, and make sure it drains out.
Okay.
And there is a condition that a long-term stormwater management agreement shall be submitted with a final site plan, which would include details on how to maintain the ponds, correct?
One more question for me. Along Pinecrest, there's currently a nice green strip there between the site and Pinecrest, and a lot of people use it for dog walking and other things. The sidewalk, yes, but also that green space where all those trees are, right?
Between the fence and the sidewalk?
I disagree. So is the fence gonna be in the same location as it is now?
It'll be on the property line. So if that, if that's backed off the sidewalk by four or five feet, whatever, to the fence line, then it'll be in the same spot. Fence is back 30 feet?
Yeah, there's a lot of room.
It, it would be in our property line. That's, that's where it would go.
Okay, so it would be in line with where it is right now?
Honestly, I don't know if that's in the property line or not, I don't have that slide for me. Right where it is?
That'd be great. It's a great buffer.
It'll be in the 30 feet.
Yeah.
If, I guess, if that aligns with our, with our new site plan. You're right.
It looks like the property line probably goes up to the sidewalk, but you don't have any development in that line, so you could, I don't...
Maintain.
I'm not sure which drawings have the, the fence line, I'm not seeing a fence line, but it could be maintained at that.
The retention pond would be, the, the, how deep retention, and within, in area where people could go?
As, as long as our parking...
It's over 200 feet.
So this...
It's like 400 feet.
Let's look at all this landscape then, is...
Yeah, so, if we're looking at sheet L2, it looks like there's the existing trees, which are outside of the fence line currently, and then there's the parking lot with the, with the screening wall for the parking, that looks like it's inside the fence line.
L2's where?
In this area.
What is you man on it for?
Area where the red cloud is.
Or not, isn't it closer to the other?
This is perfect, this is perfect right here. So you see where this line is?
Yeah, I see the fence.
That looks like where the fence is currently, and then all of this is outside. So I'm just wondering, is that where, like, is this where the gate's gonna be back here?
Yes.
Where's it, okay, I have no further wishes.
It looks like, looks like we're planting on the outside of the fence line.
That's all existing, I believe.
Yeah, there's a lot of existing plantings there now.
Yeah.
Trees.
Also renewed.
But yeah, it does look like it's...
Yeah, a mix of...
You can add as much as you like.
Add as much as you want, don't kill the ones that are there, it's beautiful.
But to your point, if you, if they walk on there, and they want to walk on it, all the trees, they won't be able to walk on it.
That's okay. More trees are better.
Okay.
Just in terms of the landscaping plan, you have a lot of shielding of the parking, like, with shrubs and whatnot, and you do currently, and it's maintained very well, it looks nice. From, I didn't drive by specifically for this, I was just looking online, so I'm not sure when the Google image is taken from, but though it's well maintained and looks very nice, the, the shrubs are quite small, and so not actually shielding the parking lot, like the intention of it. So I just wanted to note that, well, one, thank you for maintaining your property very well. But as we put in new landscaping, I don't, the intention is for, for shielding and screening of the parking, and so just making sure that we're, we're considering that as we're planting. I don't want you to put in a bunch of shrubs that aren't going to meet the intention, I think, I don't want to...
I think I understand what you're saying. You want to grow.
Yeah.
You want, you want it to be healthy and thrive.
Right.
Maintain.
Yes, yeah.
That would be, that's the intention. I think we'll have sizes on there also, there's plant sizings on there, with the minimums.
Yes.
We'll, we'll meet that for sure.
Thank you. And you might have learned from what grows well over there and whatnot. I know along Eight Mile, it could be potentially difficult. And so your, your visual, that's up in front of us and that we were just looking at, has a lot more plant sizings than are in the, in this visual, so I just wanted to note that for anyone who's not looking at the landscaping plan, there will be more shrubs, it looks like in front of the pond there, which I appreciate. I think that you'll have some maintenance along there with, I'm sure, a lot of garbage flying it off of Eight Mile, but thank you for keeping it look nice. All right, do you have any other?
Just through the chair, just to represent what was discussed at BZA, so yes, four waivers were given, and one of the changes tonight is the requirement for the drive, so discussion about not having a drive off of Pinecrest, but understood that that is required, but it will be limited to only fire, not...
Emergency vehicles.
Okay, so not, not staff or...
Not staff or...
Right, because that was a really big issue. The second one was, there was discussion about the fence line and landscaping on the Pinecrest side of the fence, so that was an expectation, and it seems like it's met here.
Sorry, just to that point, looking at, it looks like the lot line does go past the landscaping. If they did not receive that waiver, I believe more trees would need to be taken down. I don't know how, did we decide how wide that is yet or not? I don't know if it's...
I don't know how wide it is from the side.
Yeah.
30 feet.
Yeah, so that's, if we had, they had a build to of a maximum of 15, we'd actually have to take away from that space that the community does enjoy.
Right, we'd be halfway up in between that property, that green belt area, the building would be on.
One other, just difference between the plan presented then and this, was there was no parking shown on the east side of the drive. I think it was all shown to the north and the west side of the drive between the, the new drive and the Phase Two.
But... So this looks different than the site plan?
It does, because of...
But I meant, this does, yes.
Oh, yes, just, just with the drive, and just with the parking on the east side of the drive, so.
Because on the site plans, it's showing all that being banked, so there, that's not actually going to be paved until Phase Two. And so is that what you were shown, or?
I believe...
It's banked parking?
Like that, yeah.
It's banked parking?
Yeah.
We have the ability to build it, but we don't need to build it, so it's no sense in putting the art surfaces.
Understood, and, but only the bank parking was shown between the drive and the building, not...
Oh, on the east side.
So it was just a difference, I understand the count is picked up by that way, and that the fence and screening essentially will be doing the job of, you know, having parking closer to Pinecrest, but it's still a pretty big distance, so.
Well, and it's elevated, so if there was parking there, it's up six feet, and whatever landscape right in front of the parking, we need to handle lights and all that, because otherwise you got eight feet up, you got headlights coming in your house.
Yeah, how would you do the parking with the, with the elevation change, because you have the bank to the east of that drive?
Birmingham to the east of the parking lot?
Yeah.
We'd just put a berm on the east side of the parking lot.
To clarify, it's, I think it's just a berm, like a hill between the parking and the street, so the parking and the street are at the same elevation with the berm between them.
It's currently shown.
It looks like it goes up...
On the elevation plan.
And the...
The driver's significantly higher than Pinecrest.
The corner of the building is at the same elevation as the top of the hill, so I think that parking is up six feet.
Yeah, the first one is a 669.
So I'm just saying...
The drive too.
Saying your headlights will be at eight feet above the sidewalk on Pinecrest.
The truck lights will be as well as they drive through, but they don't actually go towards the cars. I didn't mean cars, I meant houses. Would we... I have a question for staff that might not be appreciated. Have a question for staff that might not be appreciated. Would it be possible for us to talk about or to provide? A potential parking waiver for those spaces to the east of the driveway? That staff would work with the applicant at the time of phase two to see what was required? For parking? One, I want to state because we have parking spaces for each employee, but also we're requiring eighty bike spaces, so. If eighty people are biking to work or taking a bus or et cetera, we are overparked. But also being that the BZA did not see parking to the east of the driveway when they provided the waiver for parking in front of a. In a front yard. And that those cars will be, would be shining headlights into the adjacent residential across from Pine Crest. Although there will be trees to screen the majority of it, but there won't be any masonry wall or specific evergreen shrubs that would maintain screening year round.
Well, I mean, they they are showing shrubs here. GTS, let's see what GTS is.
Too many things to go back and forth from. Okay, you're correct, sorry, thank you. So there would be evergreen shrubs for those screening.
Lot. Skyline thornless honey locust. So you just got the elevation.
I don't know if anyone else would be willing to. I don't even know if that applicant would want a reduction in parking or that's something that's needed.
If we don't need it, we should limit to one reduction of parking. And actually, what if we went this way and said that if we do need the parking, we go towards the building first? Right, so we we now we're pulling into the building and away from Pine Crest.
Does anyone think that? I mean, because also it sounds like phase two is planned for a few years out.
Starting three years.
Three years, just to begin and then.
It's it's a.
Five, eight.
One year deal.
Okay.
It makes sense to review it at the time to maybe even look at car use and. Bus use and bike use and just see what what the reality of the staffing is. And also, yeah, to implement the parking facing west first, adjacent to the building before exploring any on the east side of that drive.
Because he just, if if it gets down to that and and we have to park east, going east, maybe we have to put a a solid fence up or something. If that, you know, inside of our property, obviously. I guess we could depend on the growth of what's there, too.
What they're proposing.
Everything should be growing by then.
Yeah, great. So there's thirty spaces to the east there. There's more to the north across from our east street, but those are planned as part of phase one.
Mm hmm, and those are down the street.
I would say that the some of the spaces to the east are proposed as EV. We would probably want to see those as also, those not, you would still require the EV per ordinance versus saying that you could get rid of the EV.
You'd want to.
Just because those are identified as EV, we're not saying you can't, you can get rid of the EV, I guess is my point. So would we need to make a waiver for thirty spaces to work with the city for the potential reduction of thirty spaces at the time of phase two? Is that something some people are comfortable with on the commission and the city is comfortable with?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. I think we can review it, you know, when phase two comes around. I don't know if we need a separate waiver or if that can just be a condition of the plan. I think that's up to you. Something to craft it to prioritize westward facing, ensure that, you know, EV is prioritized, things like that, so.
Knowing that the city will have more. That staff will be able to waive parking with the new zoning ordinance language, is it something that we can write in? That we don't actually approve a waiver, but that we just talk about the reduction of the spaces to be waived by city staff at the time of phase two?
I think so.
Okay.
Parking requirements.
I don't want to make you have to come back again, but.
Through the chair, getting a deeper look at the landscapes that they're proposing. It's an eight foot tall arborvitae that are staggered.
Nice.
Looks like it sufficiently would would block. But I think this proposal we're asking is probably the first. If we do have east facing, it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, I see this as less of a waiver and more of a condition with intent to, you know, guide staff in the future. You know, when we get to phase two, what their parking requirements look like at the time, and maybe CED staff at that time would be able to conduct a waiver or, you know. Prioritize these parking spaces as needed.
When phase two happens, will we have to follow the new ordinance or is this considered? When phase two happens in three years, will there have to be, because we're we're going through a draft ordinance right now and going to be rewriting their zoning ordinance and. What rules will phase two have to follow?
Well, they would be locked into this plan. If they wanted to make any modifications, they, you know, they they can do that. I do think that there is more flexibility in the the new zoning ordinance in terms of industrial. You know, it might have saved them a trip to the BZA perhaps. So they they would be, you know, kept to this phasing plan even in the future.
Anything else? There is a. Example motion in our packet. That includes the waiver of CMU. But and also. The payment in lieu of the protected trees. Also that the staff will review any modifications to require truck traffic to use the Eight Mile access as applicable as part of the final site plan. We talked about one potential addition to conditions. That's the applicant to to work with staff for phase two, that the planning commission. Would waive thirty parking spaces. How do we run this? With approval of staff at the time of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm envisioning something like CED staff will, you know, the applicant will work with CED staff upon, you know. The start of phase two to evaluate, you know, the usage of the land bank parking.
I'm sure we'll need it.
Right.
But even if you don't need it, the site plan does require you to build it, no?
Yes.
How does the land banking work?
Well, I mean.
It's land bank.
It's land bank for now.
We can build it if we need to at any point. What if if the if the the count of employees isn't there to use it? You don't want it built. We don't want to build it.
And the zoning ordinance is dependent on the number of employees. I mean, that is how it's calculated.
Right, yeah.
So I suggest, you know, at the at the start of phase two, you know, there could be a reevaluation of the number of employees, in which case that number could go down. I don't know if there's any intent of that number going up or, I mean, it seems like that could be the max capacity for this building.
Anything I. Requirement may come down based on employee count. I don't think Ferndale would want us to build that parking if we're not going to use it, want any more hard surfaces anywhere.
Yeah, we agree, which is why we're just trying to figure out how to write this, so it works out well. And I think with all that stated for the minutes, we probably have a good idea of what we need and.
So we're going to have to come back for a building permit.
Correct.
In three years, right? When we start phase two. So it could be a stipulation, it'd be addressed at the at the point of that building permit being issued, we have to have a, you know, a conversation at that point. It'd be stipulated that the building permit won't be issued until that it's resolved.
Sounds good.
If I could suggest that.
Sounds good. All right, anything else? Heard entertainment motion.
Yeah, propose a motion in the matter of two thousand West Eight Mile Road sidewalk numbers as. Dated, the the planning commission approved the site plan based on the plans dated November twentieth, twenty four, received by the planning commission on November fourteen, fourteenth, twenty twenty four with following findings. And subject to the following conditions as outlined in the packet with the addition of condition number eight, that when phase two is. Trying to figure out how to word this.
At the time of building permit for phase two?
Yeah, the time of building permit for phase two, that the applicant will work with staff to to rightsize the parking for the addition. And that prioritize the west side of the lot as opposed to the side that faces Pine Crest. Right, yeah.
Motion, Michelle Walter?
Support.
Or by Michelle?
Question.
Yes.
Plans dated November twentieth but received by us on November fourteenth, how are they dated after we received them?
Reading that.
I I, yeah, I think that was a a misspeak, I think, because it's as received by the planning department. I think Commissioner Scholter said by the planning commission.
Oh, planning department.
Oh, okay.
I, yep. It's still the planning department got it before they were dated.
Yeah. How did we receive them before they were dated?
They're they're dated on eleven twenty, so.
And we received them later?
Maybe you received them.
I believe eleven twenty, because originally the applicant was considering going to the eleven twenty planning commission meeting.
They postdated them?
Yeah.
Okay.
So so they were dated for that meeting, I did receive them on November fourteenth.
Thank you.
And in the motion, change the word commission to department.
And and question and possibly friendly amendment about restricting the Pine Crest drive to only fire truck access.
Emergency access.
No staff or trucks. So I'd like.
Amendment to condition seven that talks about the the access, but to further restrict it to emergency only along Pine Crest?
I'll support, I'll accept.
Through the chair, do we have a resolution on?
You support that as a second or of the motion? Thank you.
The chair, do we have a resolution? The alignment of that Pine Crest entry, do we decide to leave it alone?
In in my opinion on that, it I don't, it's, I'm not crazy about it not being aligned, but if it but if it's only going to be used by the fire department, it's required by the fire department, and the fire department doesn't have, see any. Issues with access to it, I.
I think they also currently have a drive there. I think that they're replacing all the concrete, but if we ask them to, if they make a different change in the future and we ask them to move it, it will be at their cost. And so we've already warned the applicant of that potential potentiality, and so I think that's.
I also know that there's also a fire hydrant right by the drive, which might be part of the reason why.
I can go ahead and.
I can suggest that this this wasn't on here. We we added this drive only because the fire marshal wanted this drive.
You were going to close it, otherwise.
He didn't want it, it wouldn't be there, so we would have. Going in and out, there'd be no employees, nothing, it would, we were not going to use that curb cut as it was.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just, there's a bunch of trees there right at the end of our east street, so if we did make them do the curb cut there, then we'd be losing some very mature trees.
Very true. And there's a light pole. That you'd have to.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Raisin?
Yes.
Subakatani?
Yes.
Councilman Polica?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Showalter?
Yes.
And Chair Foster.
Outstanding. Motion passes, thank you. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for maintaining this property. All right, we'll move on to agenda item six, administrative items. Do we have any administrative items for this evening?
So. We appreciate everyone's work on the new code rewrite. We went to council on November twenty fifth, and overall, I think, pretty successful. The council generally focused on some stormwater questions, Councilor Polica can chime in, in density, really really got the density. One council member wants to bring the density down a little bit to allow preferably an ADU, I'm sorry, a duplex in ADU max. But was comfortable with maybe doing a triplex by special land use. Another counselor would be okay with that as the lowest for that person, but would prefer a quad by special land use or maybe even triplex or quad by right. We asked the council to think about it, we would send them some options and to hear back. We've heard back from a couple, still people have a little difference of opinion. So what we've put in the draft ordinance is a single family in ADU, a duplex in ADU are by rights, a triplex is by special land use, and a quad is not allowed. That's kind of the common theme we could decipher. So we'll put that in the draft ordinance, and then the council can amend it if they would like for support. I don't think there's a lot of other issues, I think one thing did come up. But I wanted to see if you guys have an interest in adding.
You can see, yes, so, so you know. I don't know if we stream this on YouTube. While you're pulling that up. Well, I'll wait.
So I put this together because each of the land use cases, special land use, PUD, conditional zoning, rezoning, text amendment, have different criteria to review them by, not a great picture. But you can see in the columns the different land use cases. And on the left hand side, you can see adequately served by essential public facilities, affordable housing, building form and design. Each of these is a criteria within those land uses. You can see some of them have commonalities. So for example, use in zoning district compatibility applies to PUD. So for example, use in zoning district compatibility applies to PUD, rezoning, conditional zoning, text amendments. In this case, it's not part of special land use. I know when reviewing a land use case, a particular land use case, say a special land use, we kind of get confused about what criteria apply. And we mix up, well, it applies for special land use, but it doesn't apply for conditional zoning. So my question is, is would a table like this that shows you the applications and the criteria help when you're looking at special land use, you're only looking at these six criteria and PUD, you're looking at these? Would this help you at all? Now, these are in the staff report when we write the staff report, but it's a lot of words that people don't see. Does this have any interest for people to have as like in general conditions or is it administrative? Might be an administrative where we just have this table.
Like put.
Go in, it could go in the staff report at the beginning of each submission or something so we can.
It'd be in the staff report per use. So I mean, if the staff reports for a special land use, it has those qualities. It's not what's showing what is reviewed versus what isn't reviewed.
It's showing what is reviewed. Yeah, correct. So you have to flip through the special land use and see these are the four criteria. But I know sometimes we get confused on, you know, site plan, is it compatible? We start going down a rabbit hole of talking about compatibility. And then you say, well, compatibility is not part of site plan. Site plan is the bird's eye view. So I don't know if this helps at all when you're looking at this, if this would help in the code? Or not?
I'm having a hard time reading what each of those things say.
It's very tough.
Really?
Fun.
Really, this is. I don't know if I can make this bigger. Can I open it? Open it with cheats? Is that better? A little better? These are just the criteria.
At the bottom, you should be able to increase.
At the bottom.
You have to, I think, select the whole spreadsheet, not just A1.
You just go to view. Yeah. There it is.
So these are the criteria. Affordable housing only applies to PUD. That's the PUD if you want to approve one, but not the other ones.
I guess I'm a bit confused. So like for example, you have lighting only listed under but we do review lighting on every.
Yeah, the, the.
Site plan.
Yeah.
It wouldn't necessarily be a special land use. So is that why that's not highlighted?
I didn't do the site plan. I didn't, I didn't plug them in. Yeah.
Gotcha.
These are the ones I did. And then Kyle mentioned you're missing site.
Gotcha.
So I would fill that in, yeah. And don't worry about the colors. I was trying to see how many were common, came up more than once or whatever. But would a table like this that you can see what applies to what application when you're reviewing the application help? Or is the words in the staff report more than enough?
I think it's potentially, I think it's helpful. I think it's potentially a little too prescriptive in that so for a special land use, you know, it's compatible with adjacent uses and improvement to the community or impact on different things. Those are a little fluffy and so they kind of do like include design features and other things. And so I, I wouldn't want to cause any confusion of like, well, no, we can't talk about that. But I think it is also helpful to like hone in of like, well, this is what we can. So to me, it's a little pros and cons to it.
I think a lot of them.
Reference?
Sorry.
Maybe just as like an internal reference for us just to help guide conversation versus. I think it's also helpful to be informative to the public of, well, this is what we can enforce per this type of application. But I again can see, you know, people taking it a bit too far or that's my only concern.
I think what we have is these were created individually, the, the land use cases. And I'm finding that a lot of them have to do with each other. So we could standardize them a little bit more. But I see what you're saying. If you are literally your interpretation of lighting, you may think you can't look at it during a rezoning or some, something that it might apply to. All right. So it doesn't seem like it's a really.
Maybe it's an internal thing. And then when we are introducing each agenda item, we make sure to to talk about, well, what does a special land use mean? Just like a little bit more, just because I think it is helpful to inform the public. And maybe that's a better way to do it. And we can maybe just even sort of read off of that, but it's more like so then. When people don't know the full context, when they're just finding these little bits of information, it can be kind of taken out of context. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Good. I, I hear you.
It does, but one thing I think this does do well is it helps like re-center my mind when I'm into where, like which lane should I stay in for this particular?
Yeah.
And because I mean, it's sometimes easy to forget that during this application, we really shouldn't be looking at the aesthetics of the building. For example, we should just be focused on
Rezoning.
Rezoning and how, and so I think it helps, it would help re-center kind of.
We'll come up with some internal document, maybe insert it in the, if there's an application that just has special land use in PUD, maybe we can take this and put it in the staff report. We don't need to put all the other ones if they don't apply. Uh, but we can work on that. I think it does, it helps me center it to say, okay, this is my lane. Don't go down a rabbit hole. Site plan is where I want to go in that discussion. With that said, we did look more into food trucks. I did a tour with a couple members of the planning commission. So I don't know if anybody wants to talk about that.
Yeah, I think I was going to save that for the commissioner items, but since we're already talking about the ordinance. Yeah, I, I, I think there is still some robust discussion that needs to be had as a planning commission. And there's enough questions that I think arose out of observing the, the mobile vendors around the city that it just, it needs some further discussion amongst the planning commission. And so my, my request, I guess, would be to take section 511, mobile vendors and mark that section as reserved for a future update and strike, strike the current language from that for now, um, so that we could have some which in a later time.
The current language is as a business license. Do we have anything currently in the planet?
Related to food trucks?
Yeah.
No.
We don't have anything currently, right? But I just want to make sure that we don't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern would be, yeah, all of a sudden we're just halting the ability.
So there's currently no language. This would add new language. And I think that.
Well, there certainly is language for mobile vending.
Only related to the business license. And then Michael Larry reviews it related to that in his own interpretation when he's doing special events or public property. This is private property.
Section C general standards from the current draft then? Because there's, we have, we had put in some, you know, like operating conditions, time constraints, that sort of thing.
We haven't yet. That would be discussion for the commission. So where we were, you know, we went on a tour and the very first one we went to, we realized they didn't have bathroom facilities.
That was an issue.
I'll leave it at that, that someone took it in their own hands to, to, to find the bathroom facilities.
Well, we've talked about that before. I mean, it wasn't your visit. That was the first time we talked about it.
No, but pulling up and seeing it happen is a different, you know, you don't realize it actually happens. And then we looked at ones that were, you know, 15 feet away from a residential house that you probably wouldn't like that. We looked at ones that were completely fine in a empty lot. Uh, we looked at some that have dining. Well, dining, you should be able to wash your hands and go to the bathroom. Some that were complimentary to like a business brewery where there are bathroom facilities. So I think you know, speaking for the tour, we realized it's, it's, um, there's a lot more to think about. There's just, you can't make one rule. We have so many different food trucks and different properties. So, um, we just want a direction from the planning commission. We take it back to council. I don't think they would have an issue if we reserved it. Um, I think the commissioner talked about, um, you know, engaging the food truck people and taking a little more thoughtful approach.
So I guess then my question stands, would we then remove section 5.11C? We would maintain A and B, which are kind of related to, um, the business license on private and public property, but we would strike and reserve 5.11C on page 73, which kind of talks more about what they can do and what they.
It would be, we have nothing now. So it'd be striking all of 5.11 and saying it's reserved for a food truck ordinance. Food trucks would follow our current, which they always have, our licenser side. And then coming back probably in the next, I mean, I would like to move on it and, and get it done, probably in the next two months, engage the food truck people, maybe have a meeting kind of sort of devoted to that, maybe with a land use case. Um, and then come in and discuss it and come up with a plan that we would then draft the regulations. It might be very similar to this. It might say they're just not appropriate on lots that are 10,000 square feet or less, or outdoor dining is not appropriate with them because you don't have bathroom facilities. But it would probably be very similar to this and then take it back forward to council to slide back in.
Would we just have a, a area in the, just a section in one of the future meetings where we just, or is this going to be like a special breakout or is staff going to kind of come up with something for us to react to and we'll respond to that?
Yeah, I think, well, we might do a mobile workshop where we announce it as a public meeting and we all tour together. We might, um, put together a kind of a portfolio of pictures because it's hard to visualize of them and invite the food truck people in to walk through it. Um, I haven't planned it out. I just feel like we've made rules and then now that we made them, I'm going, they just don't apply that directly to each one. There are some that are totally fine and there are some that, you know, this isn't a good idea here.
Are we writing rules for the six we currently have or the nine we currently have in Ferndale? Are we writing rules on the nine that could be in Ferndale in the next?
I think we're using the existing ones to show what is bad form and not a good best practice and to identify where we need to tighten up so that we can inform for the next ones. What also I believe that they would, I don't think a mobile vendor necessarily is grandfathered. It seems how it's a mobile vendor and it's not an existing.
I haven't, um, broached that subject. Part of me says a lot, a couple of them move. So the first time they move, you're not grandfather anymore. Some that have been there for a while, city attorney might argue that there's some kind of land use. I don't know. I would prefer they're not.
More of a compliance issue than a grandfathered.
So the license isn't renewable? It's if I have like the barbecue place up on Woodward Heights, they have a license.
There is no license for private property.
Okay.
There is no rules now. Um, I think we, the health department reviews them for the health department stuff. The fire department reviews them for the fire department stuff. They've generally, because there's usually a business on site, the landowner has said, you know, move it to the corner as best as you can. And they, usually the landowner, I mean, the landowner has to give. None of them are on property they own. So they need someone's approval. That's usually overseeing them to say, you can be in this corner. We have a couple, like one or two that are in drive aisles, kind of, sort of. We have a couple that are on vacant property that I'm sure the landowner is much more, yeah, do whatever you want. But the current ones would stay right now, but we don't have rules for current ones. Um, if they were causing a hazard or doing something a little crazy, we'd go out there and say, hey, move this over. But we really don't have rules for them right now.
It might be beneficial to, I don't know who has communicated with any of the mobile vendors, but it might be, it might be beneficial for the city to send a letter to each of them saying that we are considering it. So at least they're not blindsided by a meeting that's going to happen in two weeks.
Yeah, no, probably what I would do is call each one directly because they do license through the fire department. So we have their contact information. I'd probably call them each. Each one's going to have a unique perspective to do exactly what they're doing. Even if they're on a drive aisle or something, but then anybody else regulate them. They're going to be very, you know, don't worry about me, let me do my thing. But we'll probably call them, engage them, hear them out and tell them that we would like to engage, engage them on writing the rules. We probably would invite them. Uh, and Commissioner Michelle Lee also had an issue, uh, recommendation to invite the property owner as well. And then it got as far as inviting maybe neighbors around, which gets a little bit hairy. You're starting to make a bigger issue out of it, but we wouldn't, that's the whole point of this is including them in this thoughtful process versus just regulating them and pushing out rules.
And I, and I think another part of the discussion is maybe as a city, we want to think about if there is particular areas that we want to encourage or support a more thoughtful approach to where, where we would have mobile vendors as well. So, because we were seeing a variety across the whole city. And maybe there's something that we can look at how our zoning is dictating. Maybe there's something part of that that we can talk about as well.
For instance, parks, we talked about how it'd be really great to have a type of amenity at a park, but no one's currently parked near a park. Thank you. Um, anything else on food trucks or?
No, I, I just would like a consensus if you want us to go to council or have it removed and say this was kind of a head nod from planning commission. They want to think more about it.
Mr. Boo?
Yeah, I, I think we need a placeholder for it.
I see lots of heads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel comfortable. I see lots of heads. I want to move. I think we feel comfortable. Councilor Polica can speak to it if it comes up at the city council meeting.
I would, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just on the zoning ordinance, but if you're, are you moving on or?
No, we was gonna talk about that still. Um, I don't know if Councilor Polica wanted to mention the council meeting and any comments that came up or feelings you're seeing or anything at all.
Not really. Okay.
I think it went really well. I, I'd say this, you know, rewriting the entire zoning code essentially from scratch. And at this point, if the only focus really is, is should we allow three or four units, we're doing pretty good. Um, some ADA things came up, but we're in a really good spot.
Yeah, there was, well, it was the same person that came to our session about the relishes over the sidewalk. Uh, he came back and visited us at council. Um, and yeah, and then I would say 95% of the other comments were about density, you know, and not in my backyard.
Which, um, is why I'm fairly disappointed in the outcome because we've had multi-year process on this endeavor with lots of public feedback and for it to get derailed because of some comments. And there were a fair amount, but there's also support for density. Um, and for the commissioners or council persons to, to change, um, based on one meeting, whereas we had multiple, many, many, many over courses of years meetings and we all by 100% approval had approved the zoning ordinance and sent to the council. Um, I'm quite disappointed in, in their in their changing of that.
And, and I agree. It's very frustrating. Um, the, the, I call it the vocal minority, um, is, you know, expressing fear over unfounded, you know, beliefs. You know, they're worried that this is going to pass and all of a sudden developers are going to be coming in, buying up properties and knocking down houses to build quadplexes. The last time a triplex was built in the current R3 was in 1955. You know, so they haven't been trying to build triplexes and quadplexes in the existing R3 and R4s. What makes them believe that they're going to all of a sudden be knocking down, you know, the doors and buildings to be able to build them all over the city in R1s?
I think they forget that they also own the property and have the ability to not sell to developers who are going to do this. I mean,
Very true.
We are the community and it's in our hands. And this just allows for greater flexibility in a housing crisis where we need the density and more affordable housing. And so I think it was. in a housing crisis where we need the density and more affordable housing. And so I think it was.
Yeah, well, and, and, um, uh, Commissioner, um, I always have a hard time saying your name, Musa, Musa, Muschelli. Uh, and I are in a webinar that talks about, you know, ADUs and density and, and, one of the things that came up and, and it dawned on me, um, was that our use of R1, R2, R3, the, the, the more variety of residential limitations is just another, another form of redlining. You know, you're restricting these type of houses, you know, in this area, um, which limits, you know, the affordability of, of housing, you know, you, you're saying, I don't want, you know, people who have less income that can afford a smaller unit to live in my neighborhood.
And that was the, the other interesting thing that came out of those seminars was the fact that, you know, the vocal minority is not a cross-section of the community.
Yeah.
And it's predominantly
Homeowners.
Certain, certain demographics that are homeowners, that are white. Uh, and part of it is, as we could do as commissioners is understanding the, the, the groups that come to speak to us, if they are representative of the full community or not. And that's what we as commissioners have to take into account, uh, because we have had feedback across several years from a variety of our constituents, um, that helped shape the planning, the zoning that we put forward.
And to that point, I mean, do we have any? There's nothing we can do about this at this point, right? As a commission where we are speaking our, our piece right now because we approved it, council.
No, you can go to council. You're, so you can go to council and express your concern.
As a commission. Correct. But like we, there's no, we approved it. It went to council. They said, we're changing this and now that's what it is. Okay.
Yeah. They didn't say they're changing it. They just, they, there's, everyone has a little different opinion. This is how the sausage is made. We have to give them a recommendation of.
Oh, I actually take some offense to that phrase and apologize. Um, and it was actually said at council and that's when I first did. So I apologize for.
Bring that up.
But what, after you said it, that isn't, we had a master plan process, a zoning ordinance process over multiple years with many, many public committees. That is how the sausage is. It's not at one council meeting where some vocal minorities are coming to talk about how they don't want it in their backyard because they want their, they have what they're wanting. And that some city council people don't want because they don't agree with the density or one person. And so that's not how the sausage is made. We had a very long process to get to this point.
Except the hierarchy as council is the final decision maker. And so whether it was
I mean, to that point, that's very clear.
20 or it was 64, whether it was the minority or the majority, or they get to make their recommendation. I, I think all sides have an argument to it or a point of their arguments. I see what everyone's coming with. One of the counselors asked me for a list of, actually the mayor asked me for a list of all triplexes and quads in the city, which I provided to the council. I don't remember the number. It was like 15 triplexes and like 12 quads or something.
You're being generous.
So it was.
I don't think it was much more than 25 across.
It was some number. And then I, I went to Zillow and looked up all the years and as Councilor Polica said, uh, the most recent one was 1955. I think that was the quad or something. So.
Well, the most recent one was 1967, 66. But the one that was, but that was located on Nine Mile Road. But the ones that are located in the R3 or R4, the newest one was 1955.
And that's when our zoning ordinances came into effect and we've zoned out the ability to do quads and triplexes. And that is why, and to the point of this is our effective redlining, this is what we've done over the years is created zoning that doesn't allow for residential. And I think Laura did a great job in her presentations to us in city council that I think were very overlooked, um, that residential is residential. The fact that we have any different types of buildings in residential doesn't actually make a ton of sense. Um, but it was something that, and, but I think the counterpoint is also all those single families that we do have, and there was a limited amount of tries in quads were built before zoning. So it's also what the community wants. And when you do have your property, then you have the ability to build on it what you want. And so again, this is more about being inclusive and open and flexible to allow people to, um, build what they want based on the market and what's needed in the market, um, with still, and there was also a comment about, you know, free market and how it can be ruthless. This is the opposite of that. Zoning ordinance is creating, um, regulations that people would still have to build within. And so the fact that I, I completely disagree with requiring a special land use because that's, that's not going to go anywhere. People are not going to come up and say, oh, well, I want a triplex or a complex. The most difficult types of buildings to build right now in this market and say, okay, well, I have to go through a special land use process. That's going to effectively kill the ability for anyone to make those types of buildings. So
That's why we don't have a huge amount of ADUs because again, it was always a special land use for an ADU and people didn't want to have to jump through hoops.
So I don't think this is, I mean, having duplexes is great. It's additional density. I think that's a, that is a win. But I think that, um, you know, requiring any additional hoops for additional units is effectively going to kill any additional density, which was not the intent of our, um, zoning ordinance changes or the master plan that we had adopted. I, I do know that there was a reference, um, in the zoning ordinance that, um, Councilwoman McColsky identified in the zoning ordinance that is, um, I think up to three in urban traditional, but also up to four with certain land use requirements. That's what the zoning ordinance is. It has land roots requirements. You have massing. You have all the requirements that are needed for, um, those complexes. So I would argue that even the master plan stated that up to four units was, um, what we were looking for in that traditional residential. I, um, wish I would have been able to make it to the city council to state this in front of them and I hope to on the 16th or whenever it goes back. Do we know?
16th.
16th. So.
Of this month, right? December 16th.
December 16th at seven o'clock. And I don't know if there's a lot on the agenda that night. I think it might be kind of late.
Uh, there's a number of presentations. Yeah.
Yeah.
And sorry, to, to reconfirm, um, the changes now to make tries, a special land use and eliminate quads?
Yes.
From R1? Okay.
And ADUs would only be allowed for single or double duplexes, singles or duplexes?
It couldn't increase the unit.
Yeah, you can't have an ADU with a triplex.
Yeah.
Correct. Is, is what is the language that's going to go to council?
The quads are the ones that require ADUs, um, which means that if we're not allowing quads, that they're not going to be built and that doesn't increase our, um, infrastructure of accessible dwelling units in the city. Um, at least not through quads.
So the planning commission individually would like to come to the meeting and give comments.
I encourage you. I really do.
You're more than welcome. I don't think there's anything else on the code. I think we've gotten the comments or most of them into Laura and McKenna. We anticipate she'll get them back. We'll get it on the council agenda.
Well, to that point, um, it was stated at our last meeting, but thank you guys so much for getting it to this point. It's almost across the finish line and it's been a lot of work up to this point. And I really commend you guys for all the effort that you've put into it. I know it's been a lot of work, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm very proud of the planning commission, the steering committee, uh, Christine and Kyle. I mean, 19 months of work, uh, and for them to put up with me and my comments in the drafts over and over.
Yes, you've done a lot. Thank you.
Over again.
When this does come.
You guys can laugh. It's okay. I know.
Will this be, want something that where there will be given of, give, public will have an opportunity to comment on this or?
Yes. Okay. On the final, final draft?
Yeah, because it'll be part of the regular agenda in any.
Okay.
President's to come and comment, actually on the consent agenda too, but it's going to be on.
And I do, I mean, I'm, I'm on the forums. I watch it from a distance. I do think there will be people there, um, on both sides, but there'll be people there saying that it's already too mu, that what's being proposed is too much. So, you know, if you want to come give your comments, uh, I welcome it. I don't think there's anything else from staff?
Joe Fisher.
All right. I know you all already know this, but this is my last meeting, so I just wanted to say a quick thank you to everyone, um, for being so great and helping me learn a lot. Um, I was telling Kyle when I, when I first started this job, I didn't even know what a PUD was. So I've come a long way, so thank you.
You certainly have. You've learned a lot and taught us a lot along the way and, um, have done so much work. Particularly while going through grad school and we know that's a lot. Um, so it's a lot to accomplish and was well done. Um, you brought a lot of energy as well as consistency through a lot of change, um, on the city side. So we really appreciate it and thank you and wish you best luck in your new role.
Thanks so much.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, if I could, I just wanted to, you know, send our best wishes to Christine, you know, from Roger and I, you know, Christine was the bridge, I guess, who kind of linked us from uh, our predecessors to us. Um, she kept the ship afloat. Um, if you weren't aware, Christine kind of kept the master land use plan going. Quite literally by herself, uh, which I think is pretty incredible, um, while she was still in grad school. So it's been a pretty amazing journey to see her go through, uh, grad school, take on site plans, learn more and more. Um, so we're definitely going to miss her. Yeah. Yeah. So she's got some site plans under her belt. So you'll have to come back and see, you know, what it looks like when it's all built, you know? So just, uh, you know, we wanted to ex, express our well wishes, you know, from all of us. We had a nice, uh, CED lunch today, um, which is very cool. So, thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Believe, um, we've talked about the commission items that I was aware of. Anything else for the commission this evening? All right. Well, December 16th, um, encourage everyone to make comments to the city council if you have any on the zoning ordinance. And we will adjourn the meeting at 8:34. Thank you.